Thanks, everyone, and welcome to the public hearing for the special town meeting. It is November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven oh five P M., and I will open this public hearing. We are meeting today to discuss and deliberate upon the special town meeting, which will be held on November twenty-second at Millville Elementary School, so this coming Monday at seven o'clock P M. Here with us today, we have the members of the Finance Committee. Gary and Claudette are on the line, as well as myself. Chris is expected to join us soon, and then we also have Jennifer Gill, who is the Chair of the Board of Selectmen and the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee. Peter Caruso, who is our Town Administrator. Chief Coop, who leads our police right now. And then we have Tina, who is our Senior Center Representative. Chris, I see that you've joined us as well. Can you hear me? Okay. Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, I can now. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about all.
No worries. And we have Jackie Lima, who is our Town Moderator. So I wanted to just begin this meeting by having Jackie maybe give us some rules of the road on what to expect on Monday, and then we'll jump right into the the public hearing and go through the warrant. Jackie?
Great. Thanks, Aubrey. I appreciate, you know, coming to the hearing and just giving everybody some ground rules, some information, what they can expect. And obviously, if there are any questions or concerns, I have an email address, moderator@millvilleMA.org. Feel free to send any comments or questions ahead of time, and we'll do our best to address them. But I just wanted to remind everybody, as Aubrey just did, Monday, October twenty-second at seven P M.
November, November.
What did I say? October? November. November twenty-second. Thank you. See, you said it better than me. I should have just let you do it.
Just want to make sure people show up.
Seven P M., and we try to begin the meetings promptly at seven P M. So if you can arrive early, a few minutes, that way the tellers can get you checked in and get you seated. We are going to require, since it's an indoor location, that everybody wear masks for the entire duration of the meeting. We're going to ask that you social distance yourself if you're not with somebody in your immediate family, or even if you are and you just don't want to sit with them. Try to keep a couple of seats in between you. I believe the Board of Health is also going to have every other row sectioned off so that we can keep some distance as well. Just a reminder as how the meeting is made, we go through the warrant, article by article, and a motion will be made. The person who moves the article will have three minutes to present it or discuss it. Any resident who wishes to speak either for or against the article can raise their hand. I will recognize them. They can come down to the microphone that will be located at the center of the stage. State your name and address clearly, and then you get three minutes to discuss whatever it is that you'd like to say. Once everybody in the room has a turn to speak, if anybody would like to re-engage, we can certainly allow people to come up again once everybody gets a chance to talk. Something that's part of the rules of annual town meeting is that we keep discussion to what's called the four corners of any article. So as a ground rule, we are voting on a specific thing, whether it's a budget, whether it's a bylaw change. And conversation really needs to be within the four corners in the scope of that article. So there might be times if discussion starts going awry about things that are not being voted on, that I will let the speaker know that, you know, that that conversation is just not appropriate for town meeting. Looking at the articles that are being presented next week, I just want everybody clear that we are voting on very specific things, and conversation outside of those articles and what they're being asked will not be permitted within the meeting. And the other thing that I wanted to mention that's a little bit unique for next week's meeting is, and I'm sure Aubrey will go through this as well, or Peter, at this time, there is no free cash available as a funding source. So articles that have a monetary value to them, if they're coming from stabilization account, require two-thirds of the meeting attendance to approve. So we usually have a few of these articles, but I envision next week we'll probably have more of them. So I will remind as the articles being motioned and seconded, if the vote is going to be a two-third, but I just want people to be aware, you know, two-thirds of whoever is in the room as a checked-in voter that evening will be required to pass anything that is using stabilization. That's just the way those funds and that's just the way those funds work. So at that time, that was kind of the highlights of what I wanted to discuss. But if anybody from the board or if anybody put in the live stream any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jackie, very much. All right, so before we just jump into it, just in terms of process on how this meeting is going to go, I'm going to share screen and put the warrant up on the screen. I'm going to go article by article, so I'll read the article, I'll read the explanation to the article, I'll read the current recommendations from the Board of Selectmen and the Capital Planning Committee, if relevant. And then I will just ask if anyone has any clarifying questions or any points that they want to that they want to make with us all on the line. Certainly, this is the time for the public to ask any questions that they have. So if there's anyone on the live stream link that has a question, you're going to utilize the chat button on the bottom of the screen to answer your question, and then I will be asking Alex if there are questions on the live stream link, and at which point in time he will read them off and we will respond to them. So I'll go, you know, article by article. Once we get through the warrant, I will close the public hearing and ask that anyone who's on this side of the line that is not a member of the Finance Committee drop and join the live stream link so that you can continue to listen in. And at that point, kind of public discussion will be closed. The Finance Committee will go again, article by article, discuss amongst ourselves, deliberate, and ultimately vote on our recommendations as they apply to what we'll be presenting to the town. Does anyone have any questions on just procedure? Okay. If not, I will share screen and pull the warrant up hidden on a second here. All right, can everybody see? Give me like a thumbs up or something. Yes, yes, thank you, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so we'll start at the top. Article one, monetary increases. To see if the town will vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as recommended by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item, article, or other funding source that will be reduced by the same amount or take any other action in relation there to. The explanation is this article requires that any individual making or amending a motion which will increase any budget line item that has not been recommended by the Finance Committee must also provide the source of funding for said increase. So, you know, really, the spirit of this article, which is an article that stays on all of our warrants related to town meetings, is that if there is a motion made on the floor, we need to state the funding source. If there's an amended amendment to the motion, there needs to be a funding source articulated. As Jackie mentioned, we do not have any free cash available at this time, so any of our funding sources will be from our various stabilization accounts, of which we will discuss in detail the balances that are in each stabilization account. The Selectmen recommended this three to zero. It did not require a capital vote. Does anyone have any questions about this article at all? Okay, Alex, is there anything in the live stream?
No, no comments at the moment.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'll move on. Article two, bills of prior fiscal year. To see if the town will vote pursuant to general laws, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money necessary for the purpose of paying outstanding bills from prior fiscal years and/or take any other action relative there to. Explanation: This article seeks town meeting authorization to pay prior year's bills, which is required pursuant to mass general laws, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four. Passage of this article requires a four-fifths majority. At the time of this writing, there are two outstanding bills. One from the F Y twenty for assessor software license of six thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, and another for F Y twenty for C M R P C Planning Board Services, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. The Selectmen recommended this three to zero. The Capital Committee recommended this five to zero. Does anyone have any questions related to this article? Again, these are just outstanding bills that were from past fiscal years. We discussed during our last meeting that the software license outstanding bill was something that was, in fact, budgeted for. It just, for whatever reason, was messaged and not paid. Does anyone have any questions? Alex, anything in the chat?
Nope, nothing in the chat.
Okay. Okay, Article three, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget adjustments. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or to borrow or to transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be deemed necessary to adjust town expenses from what was previously approved at the Millville May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one annual town meeting for specific departments as identified for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-one, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, or to take any other action in relation there to. Explanation: This annual article provides for specifically identified adjustments to previously approved department budget amounts for tax-supported town operations and activities, including the operating budgets of the schools, public safety, and general government. Please see the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget adjustment document, which I will pull up right now. Okay, so this, and let me know if you.
We can see it.
Okay, thank you. This is the summary of the budget adjustments that are being or were recommended by the Town Administrator, the Board of Selectmen. We've discussed these in the past. They include two, really, two buckets of items. The first is for public safety, so the proposed adjustments to public safety total ninety-six thousand five hun- nope, yes, ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars. Right, yes, that's right. And then the adjustments to the school departments, Norfolk Aggie, Tuitions and Transportation, Trifoc Vocational Tuitions and Transportation. The total there is thirty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-two. So the total adjustments that are being recommended by the Board of Selectmen for the budget is a total of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. I did want to share a little bit more detail on, as we discussed during the last meeting, the the public safety line items being a little bit unknown to us as there were certain events that happened at the first part of this year that require us to make certain adjustments to the to the public safety departments. So I just wanted to share kind of a summary of what Peter and Jen were able to provide to give us a little bit of context here on on why why this adjustment and why this adjustment is so large. So typically, for special town meeting, we're not adjusting budget departments unless something extraordinary happens. I would say for public safety, something extraordinary happened at the first part of this of this year, which require us to look at this budget a little bit closer. So if you can see screen here, we have what we approved at our what we approved at our annual town meeting. So in total, for our annual town meeting, we approved eight hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars across police and fire. Normal course of business through October eighth, we had certain amounts that were paid out just for typical, you know, salaries, kind of business as usual. And then you'll see what happened kind of after ten eight is we had to make some some payments related to retirement. So we ended up, after that point, having depleted our police chief salary and our fire salary line items. So they are now currently zero, and we're in, you know, we're it's November, so we have several, many more months of the year to go to get to June thirtieth. So what the Board of Selectmen worked out and and what Peter worked out along with the the chiefs of police and fire is the amount that we'll need to get through the remainder of the year. And we have, you know, I passed around kind of a detailed calculation as to how we how those numbers were derived, and certainly, you know, certainly where we can talk through that if if people would like. But that brings us to, you know, a total adjustment required of the adjustment amount here. I guess the adjustment amount is over here, but it's back to that other.
Aubrey, actually, I think column H are the increases and the line item items that's the total. So yeah, that's the the acting chief salary started during the. So this is, I don't know that that actually title is correct. That should maybe say what we're putting back.
This is like the adjustments.
Yeah. Yeah, and especially since because police Quinn, that isn't all just for acting chief Coop. That includes Quinn for other police officers as well.
So this, you know, this was helpful for me because I think when we last spoke, there were a lot of questions as to, you know, what the proposal was here. I don't know if if anyone, you know, has particular questions right now. We have Jen online, Peter's on the line, Chief Coop is on the line. So to the extent we have questions on these amounts or, you know, anything related to them, I think we can ask them now if anyone has questions.
I just, oh, go ahead, Claudette, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So my first question is, it shows the chief, the police chief salary, and you go across down column G, it shows balance after one-time retirement pay. So it tells me that the previous chief had retirement pay. So when I look at the stabilization summary, there in the O P E B stabilization, isn't that, isn't that like used for retirement of employees? Am I understanding that wrong?
Peter, could you speak on that? Claudette had asked me that question as well, and.
So the O P E B is to set aside for future retiree health benefit payments, which are really carrying them forward on the health plan. And so there's a liability. It's over half a million bucks. The town has an O P E B trust fund into which it's put one hundred and forty-two grand. So that is unrelated to a retirement of a person. That would be if they participate in the health plan as a retiree, and that's what that trust fund set aside for. So you can't tap into it.
Peter?
Yeah?
Sorry, what was that, Claudette?
I said that strictly used for health benefits of employees.
That's correct. They call it other post-employment benefits, which is really not pension-related, not salary-related, just health, health part, health plan-related.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a question probably for Jennifer and Peter. It's not a secret. I've had an issue with this one in particular. What changed in the last week that allowed us to be told what the money was for, where as before, we couldn't? And the reason I'm asking that is, again, we do have the viewers, and this is open to the public. So I want to make sure that everyone gets a explanation as well as myself.
Yep, so I think, well, we have settled along that's a one-time retirement payment. And when I was talking with Aubrey, I wasn't really understanding what exactly was needed, so we met one day. Aubrey wasn't, I don't know, we met before today. And I said, can I can put this together? We can talk about the one-time retirement payment. And she said, this would be great. So it was just, you know, maybe just a matter of time putting this in between other meetings that we both had, but then just really spending time and sitting down with others to say, what do you need to see? And then she asked questions, and I said, okay, I can tell you this. So what she asked, fortunately, was what I could say.
No, that absolutely understandable, Jen. I'm not asking anybody to break the law.
I know, you're not.
But column H, the fifty-eight thousand dollars, before we changed that title in column H, you know, it did mention that new police chief salary adjustment, which by all means, Chief Coop, thank you for being who you are and stepping up, and it's well-deserved to keep our public safe. But we didn't know that until, you know, email change and then today's public meeting. So I'm curious as to the legalities, what changed that allowed us to say that?
If I could.
Sure.
When I was at your Finance Committee the last time, we went through this, and it was clear that there was nothing left in the budget, as you see in column G, for those line items. And the need was for the continuing operations and funding the chief salary and and both chief salaries. So you might not have fully understood that at the time we had our la- you had your last Finance Committee. So I don't know that we've changed our story by any means. So that's all. I don't, I believe we've been consistent all along.
Yeah, no, Peter, I'm not, I'm not saying the story changed at all. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. It may be my my own understanding being a little twisted. I was just, you know, again, it is what, you know, we've all heard the story I've told a couple of times over, so I won't rehash it, but I was just curious.
Yeah, and I think too, like, obviously, there's some sensitive information involved in this whole, like, in this whole story. I'll use story just meaning like the the facts here. And so for me, like, I'm a very much a logical numbers person. So like, being able to lay it out where I think Peter and Jen had sort of had said the things that we're seeing here before, but like, being able to see it in this format where we can very clearly see, you know, where the numbers go to zero and what we need to adjust them back for for this for the for the line items for the remainder of the year, I think is just really helpful for people. So I'm glad that, I'm really grateful that we're able to get to this level of detail because personally, it made me feel a lot more comfortable with what I'm talking about.
And Aubrey, I guess the only other comment I would make is if you look at the police chief's salary in C five, it's the seventy-nine, five, nine, five. So if you divide that by the fifty-two weeks, that comes out to fifteen, thirty, so for weekly salary. And if you take the fifty-eight thousand divided by the remaining forty weeks, that comes out to fourteen, fifty. So we're actually paying Chief Coop just a little bit less acting chief than the previous. So I just wanted to make that clear, that that's salary is a little lower. So I think there was some confusion as to like, is this on top of anything else, and it's not. This is the base salary for acting police chief. And then there's adjustments for Quinn and other things, which I'm not going to pretend to fully understand, but we will pay those union-required benefits. But that's, I just wanted to point that out because there are other calculations that someone said, so we're paying all this. And I'm like, no, it's it's this. It's a little bit different. And he actually gets paid every two weeks. I don't know if you would double. It doesn't matter, but the point is it's a little less.
Does anyone else have any questions on this, anything that's not clear? Alex, do we have anything in the chat?
Uh, no, not at the moment.
Okay.
Aubrey?
Well, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Claudette.
So Jennifer, you say the remainder of the year is fifty-eight thousand dollars on the salary.
Yeah.
So the breakout that I have, it says this does include the Quinn, so maybe that's what the difference is in what I'm looking at in the total chief salary for remaining remaining forty weeks. This does include Quinn.
It does not include Quinn.
The Quinn is separate, fourteen, five.
Yeah, and that's not just, that Quinn line item is not just allocated to the chief. There are other kickers for other officers, I believe. Peter knows this better than me because he negotiated the contract. Like, it's ten percent for office for bachelors, and then there's another kicker for masters.
Yeah, if you have a masters is twenty-five percent. It's ten percent for bachelors, twenty-five for masters, and I think it's five percent for, you know, two-year degree.
Associate, okay.
Last, oops, sorry, Aubrey.
Sorry, Claudette, does that answer your question?
Um, yeah.
You sure?
Oh, two. Yeah, because this is a, I think this is a total combined because this says, this shows like there's an increase for a ten percent increase for being a sergeant. Do you know the document I'm looking at?
Yeah, you're just looking at the second, right, this one.
See, right there, so sixteen thousand three two for the total chief salary.
That includes Quinn.
That, and, oh, this does include Quinn, yeah. So it's just a different level of detail between this tab and the other tab. Yeah, so some of that was broken out and put into the Quinn line. Yeah.
Got it.
Last, lastly, for that fifty-eight thousand, the thirteen thousand change that was left in some account for, nobody knew why, but then we found it. So that'll be going towards this, leaving this total out of the taxpayers' pockets to be forty-five, correct? For that fifty-eight?
No, this will not be coming from taxpayers' pockets. This will be coming from stabilization.
I.
Well, yeah, you're saying, Chris, I think you're saying that we're, we will, we'll look at, we will look at the summary of the stabilization balances kind of after we get through this, but we're funding this total difference from two different sources. One is general stabilization, and the other is that previously appropriated thirteen thousand dollar number that's also going to be used. And that's like a freebie, sort of, because it is taxpayer money, but it it was like previously appropriated, so we don't see it in our stabilization funds anymore.
Yeah, it's found money.
Found money, the best kind.
Yeah.
Um, other questions?
Claudette, did you have one?
No.
No, okay. I'm sorry. I thought I heard something. And then I guess because this was a question Aubrey asked previously as well, and I just want to make it clear that at the annual town meeting in the spring, we'll be looking at increasing from column C, not I. So there will be, you know, an adjustment for whatever's been negotiated with the chief on on line five, sorry, C five, and then for the police chief, for the fire chief as well. So it's not all of a sudden the police chief in Millville is going to be making a hundred and forty thousand in two thousand and twenty-two. That's not the case. Because then I would want to be the police chief, and let's be clear.
All right, excellent. So I think for the benefit of what the town meeting will see, we're going to, and Peter and Jen, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we're going to show the just the the summary budget adjustments that we looked at first. So where it shows the schools and the public safety, it shows the adjusted amount and the total. And then in the explanation to the to the adjustments, that's when we would provide any context we find to be relevant. And then certainly, if people have questions, they can ask questions, but the goal is that taxpayers and townspeople come prepared for town meeting and have kind of watched these meetings and and understand the background before they get there.
Yep. And Aubrey, if I may, acting chief Coop is on. I didn't know if he had any comments.
I don't right now. If anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alex, still nothing in the chat, correct?
Yeah, no.
Okay. All right, so let's move forward then. And I don't know if I said this, but the Article three, so Selectmen recommended two to one, so two in favor, one against. Capital recommended four in favor, zero against, one abstain. And the recommendation that Capital made was to recommend using the general stabilization account to fund these budget adjustments. Okay. Article four, so Article four is the reimbursement of reserve fund transfer from Public Safety Stabilization Fund for fire truck repairs. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund or any available funds, a sum of twenty-eight thousand dollars for the purpose of reimbursing the reserve fund for monies spent repairing Fire Truck Seventy-Five. Explanation: This article allows for transferring funds into the reserve fund to replenish reserve funds previously used as authorized by Millville's Finance Committee for unforeseen repairs to Fire Truck Seventy-Five. The Public Safety Stabilization Fund is a reserve fund which is funded from fifty percent of ambulance receipts and is intended to fund public safety vehicle and equipment needs. A majority vote of town meeting voters is required to appropriate funds into the reserve fund. Guess just a point of clarification, so I think because we're pulling from Public Safety Stabilization, though, I wonder if that's a two-thirds vote or a majority vote. I don't know.
That's, that's a two-thirds.
Yeah, okay, so maybe we just clarify that explanation at town meeting. So this was, this was an article to. So this was, this was an article to replenish our reserve fund for the Finance Committee. As everyone knows, our reserve fund is used for extraordinary and unforeseen circumstances. We had an instance about a month ago where we had an extraordinary and unforeseen circumstance regarding our, one of our fire trucks that was unable to be operated safely. So we funded the, the repair of that vehicle. So this article will put twenty-eight thousand dollars, which was the balance of our reserve funds prior to making that adjustment about a month ago, back into our reserve funds that we have that money available to us, to the extent we have any other emergencies. And typically, quite honestly, these types of emergencies come up toward the end of the year, so closer to the May-June timeframe, as the budgets are getting, you know, down to, down to nothing, and, and we're closing out the year. That's oftentimes when these emergencies come up. So we do want to have something available so that we can address them. And, and the alternative would be to need to go to a town meeting to address an emergency, so definitely not ideal for the town. Does anyone have any questions or comments related to this article? Okay, Alex, anything in the chat?
No comments in the chat, yep.
Thank you. All right, I'll move on. So Article Five, Article Six, and Article Seven are really easy because we have no, we have no free cash to appropriate into our stabilization funds. So, you know, typically, we like to use special town meeting to replenish our reserve funds, our stabilization funds, rather. Free cash is not available to us, so these articles will be put onto our annual town meeting, at which, at which time we will have free cash hopefully available, and we'll be able to kind of replenish our, our funds at that point. So there'll be a motion made on the floor to strike these articles, and we don't need to discuss them. All right, that brings us to Article Eight, the Senior Center Van. To see if the town would vote to transfer ten thousand dollars from Millville's capital stabilization account to be used to fund twenty percent of the cost of a van, provided the balance comes from Mass DOT grant. Explanation: The Senior Center is looking to take advantage of a Mass DOT grant opportunity which provides eighty percent funding toward a new Senior Center van. The anticipated cost of the new seven-passenger van with dual-wheelchair capacity is fifty thousand dollars. And the van will provide greater utility, greater comfort for passengers, be easier to drive, and have lower costs to operate and maintain than the current larger twelve-passenger van, which has recently required significant ma- significant maintenance and repair costs. One of the critical first steps of the lengthy grant application process due by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, is a verification that the town has funds available for its twenty percent portion of the cost of the van, ten thousand dollars. If the town does not obtain the grant, the funds will not be utilized and can be repurposed at a future date. This requires a two-thirds vote. The selectmen recommended two to one, and the capital committee recommended five to zero. Are there any questions related to this article? And we do have Tina on the line, so she can answer anything that we have questions on.
So I have a question about the, the recently required maintenance when we put pay costs. What, what were those? Those were on the old van, I know, because we don't have a new van yet. But what, what kind of costs were put into that?
So, this is Tina. The,
Hi Tina.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. So we recently had to pay one thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety-five, fifty cents. And this was for a repair on a muffler that needed to be replaced, brakes, and inspection, and clamps. These clamps were a special order because of the Elkhart body parts. And the clamps were for stabilization of the vehicle. So that, that was the big major repair that we just recently had to do. The van was tied up as a result for four weeks. We don't want to have to do that again, so.
No, I'm sure you don't. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this one? Anything in the chat, Alex?
Nothing in the chat at the moment.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Article Nine, Highway Department Salt Shed Storage Edition. To see if the town would vote to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from Millville's capital stabilization account to be used to build a storage addition to the salt shed for use by the highway department. Explanation: With its recent vehicle purchases and less-than-ideal storage spaces currently used by the highway department, it has been determined an addition to the existing salt shed on Main Street will serve the department's storage needs for at least the next eight to ten years. This article ensures Highway will have the resources they need to build an appropriate facility to better preserve and maintain their equipment for the efficient daily operation of the department. At the time of this writing, the town has been informed State Senator Fatman is attempting to obtain funding for up to seventy-five thousand dollars toward this project. Said funding is not certain yet, so the article requests voters to approve the total amount. This requires a two-thirds vote. Selectmen recommended two to one, capital recommended five to zero. Are there questions related to this article? I guess my only question, John, related to Senator Fatman's efforts here is I would hope that our funding of this won't necessarily impact his ability to get us anything he would have been able to get us.
No, so I told him, so he always says, what are you willing to spend? And if I can't get you any, any money, I'm still going to spend it. And because we just recently purchased new equipment and things like that, Brian's been on with capital planning a few times, talking about what he got, where he stores things now and how he stores things now. So regardless, I would spend this hundred thousand dollars, and I support this. But, and Senator Fatman is, like, he's, he's planning to, he's trying to come to the town meeting on Monday, and he's very, very sure that he's going to get it. So actually, let me text him again. And because he mentioned, I have an update last week. I know he's really busy too, so he just probably slipped his mind, doesn't think, slipped my mind, but yeah. So he is still planning on the full seventy-five regardless of what we fund. And if we do know on Monday that we will be getting the funding, then we will amend the amount at that time. But if we don't have that confirmation from him yet, we have to fund the full amount because we can't start the work with just twenty-five thousand dollars available. And then what we would do is say we started and appropriated the full hundred thousand dollars, and this would be one of the things, Aubrey, that you and I talked about, that we need to make sure Peter keeps a running list. So we say, hey, we appropriated this before, we didn't spend it. Let's put it back into free cash, or put it back into a stabilization account, so we don't have those. I love having found money, but I don't want to be, you know, I want to make sure we're keeping more, better tax on that. Does that make sense?
Yes. Is there a question? Was there someone else have a question or something to say?
Yeah, the question was if we get the seventy-five thousand dollars from the Senator, wow, that would go, that just goes back into the account, right?
No, so if we, so if we, once you approve an article like this and immediately is no longer in our stabilization account and it's in that reserve fund for appropriations, and then if we don't end up using it, then we would, at a future town meeting, put it back. It'll be available to put back. But it doesn't just like, same with the Senior Center Van, right? If they don't get the grant, it's not like that ten thousand dollars is just still in our account. It's not. We have to appropriate it back in.
Okay. And what, I had the, another question. I think this question came up in another meeting. The building that he wants to put up, is that going to be, you know, big enough for any future purchases of equipment? You know, is he going to be looking to put in addition? Hasn't really been thought up?
So I went down there last week and checked it out to answer that question, Claudette. That building should be able to do what we currently have, because there's not a full-time force of guys running to protect that equipment and give it the electricity and stuff to keep the diesel blocks heated so they can be started and actually used during the winter and protect, I think it's a hundred and thirty or a little more thousand dollars worth of two pieces of equipment that are sitting outside right now. That building should be able to get us estimated, you know, kind of a couple guys throwing some things in the air, ten years until we can figure out, you know, what's better or what we can appropriate. Now, that ten years was not stated by anybody. That's just guys guessing about how things, you know, what equipment's there now. And since I don't believe we'll be adding any square footage to the town, I don't think that's going to be necessary to add too many more pieces of equipment to run with it. But that, that will get us by for quite a while, I guess, is, is how to answer that question.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Absolutely.
Anything else on this? Okay. Um, where am I? Okay, Article Ten. Article Ten, I'm going to call it NESHAP. Does it have a pronunciation?
That's how I say it.
Okay. All right. To see if the town would vote to transfer ten thousand dollars from Millville's capital stabilization account to be used for a NESHAP inspection of the Old Town Hall, which is required prior to altering or tearing down the building to evaluate hazardous materials, if any, identify appropriate options for addressing, and facilitate preparation of requests for proposals for action on suitable options. Explanation: This article provides funding for assessment of hazardous materials, existence in the Old Town Hall, and related remediation options. Such assessment is required regardless of the paths the town may take with the facility, and is one of the first steps toward taking action by the town on its longer-term facility plan. This requires a two-thirds vote. Selectmen voted two to one in favor of this, capital recommended five to zero. Are there questions related to this article? Alex, go ahead. Go ahead, Claudette.
I listened to the capital planning meeting on my way to work on Monday, I think it was. What, what is the urgency in having this done now? Because I, listening to the meeting, I, I know, Chris, you said that it changed your mind, or it may have swayed your mind, but can you?
Yeah, so when, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Jen, you, Jen can give the details. I'll tell you why it swayed me. I think that getting the NESHAP now and putting it into this meeting as far as a special town meeting kind of gave us the opportunity to plan, therefore maybe even have plans to present at annual town meeting. That's kind of where I was swayed a little bit. I forget the gentleman's name who drew up an incredible plan. I'm still not fully read through twice. But in order to keep that building in that plan or as a part of that plan, the NESHAP would be required, so we know what options we have with that specific building. So Jen, sorry to cut you off there, but you have probably more details than I, but that's kind of why it's swaying me.
Yeah, no, you didn't cut me off at all. I was waiting for others to talk. So the gentleman's name's Rich Cabello, so he does the Philly's planning for the National Guard, I believe. So he's generously donated during time for this. And Claudette, we asked him, you know, would this help further our plans along? And just like Chris said, he's like, absolutely. This, when you can get this done, that's information I can incorporate into my plan so that we can better present our options back to the community. And one of the goals, and it's, it's looking more like a stretch goal every day, but I'm still hoping it's a goal, that the annual town meeting, we can say, hey, here are our three options for facilities moving forward in Millville. We have small, medium, and large, or, you know, two smalls and a large, or whatever the three top ones we come up with and say, you know, what do you feel like best? And this is a critical component of that evaluation process.
So, so is part of your planning, obviously, I didn't see your plan, I'm not part of the capital, you know, committee, but is part of that plan to use this building?
So we're not sure. There's a couple of different options. There is an option where we look at tearing down the town hall, putting it, the Old Town Hall, building a new one there that doubles as town hall and police station. And there's a lot of different configurations. So, but no matter if we are to tear it down or renovate it, this is an inspection that we have to do, and it lasts forever. So that's, it would just, we're going to have to do it sooner or later. And I think what swayed Chris is when Rich said, if we do this sooner, that information's available to me and to put into the plan, and that helps me move the plan along.
Yeah, Claudette, like, you know, as has been discussed, it helps us put a kind of a, what can we do? And answer that question to the planning. There are a couple of options out there. This is one of them, but without this inspection, there's no way to tell what kind of option it is. So that's kind of, I think that's what adds the urgency to it to be a special town meeting, because once we know what we can do, we can make appropriate plans with that as an option.
Yeah, I, I understand that completely. I just, you know, I just was curious if part of the plan was to use that building, or if it was, you know, part of the plan was to tear it down.
We don't know where we're at. We don't know yet.
Yep. Until we find out what that inspection says, we can't answer that question.
How long does the inspection take?
But I think, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just, how long does the inspection take? Is it like a process to get inspected, or can you have it done by like next week?
I don't know.
Okay. Go ahead, Claudette.
So I, I believe there was an inspection done on it so that it could be, so that they had to move the new town hall. They, they had to move to the new town hall from the inspection that they had already had done on it.
So my understanding, and Peter and Jen, maybe you can help me out with that a little bit. My understanding is that the inspection that was previously done was not as in-depth as what would be required for renovation or, or, you know, tearing the building down. It was more so, can I safely use this and can we be here? And it was a no, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know about the other inspection. And, oh, sorry, Peter, you'll know.
Yeah, so it was Kleinfeld, there was, did a report inspecting basically the structure of the, the Old Town Hall, confirming that it, you know, wasn't safe to reside there. But the NESHAP inspection is really looking at hazardous materials. Asbestos material, you know, there's hydraulic fluid in the elevator that needs to be addressed. Lead paint, those sorts of things comes out of the NESHAP inspection. And you must have that regardless of what you do with the building, whether you're going to tear it down, whether you're going to renovate it, whether you might sell it to somebody. And this NESHAP inspection is good forever. So once it's done, it's on the books, and it also provides for useful information for someone to come in and cost out the remediation or removal of the materials that are hazardous as part of a tear down or a renovation. So it, it makes a lot of sense, and a lot of the paths that the capital committee might want to go down will be smarter paths determination, if you will, using this, this, this inspection.
I have a question that maybe, I'm not sure you guys will have the answer, but is there something you said kind of jogged my memory on another experience I had completely unrelated, but is there anything that can come out of this inspection that would cause us to need to, like, have some major environmental cleanup or anything like that, that you can foresee? Like, I know in some situations, you, the hydraulic lift maybe, maybe think of that as, you know, not saying that it shouldn't be done for that reason, but just curious if that's, if this is something that might lead to many other things that need to be looked at.
I don't, I don't know, but I do think that hydraulic fluid in the elevator is some, it would be one of the things that might have more urgency than asbestos, which i- if the asbestos is getting into the atmosphere, which in a cursory review by Rich, and, you know, he and I went in there recently, doesn't seem to be, it seems to be limited and not getting into the atmosphere. So that's not urgent. Lead paint is not urgent, so it's really just that we don't want hydraulic fluid leaking into the groundwater.
Yeah.
That's the challenge.
Okay, I'll hold my breath. Any other questions on this? Alex, anything in the chat?
No, nothing in the chat.
All right, moving on to Article Eleven, Fire Department EMS Chest Compression Machine. To see if the town would vote to transfer from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund or any available funds, a sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing an automatic CPR device for the town's ambulance. This article allows the purchase of a critical state of the This article allows the purchase of a critical state of the art life-saving piece of equipment for the new ambulance. It uses it. Its use provides much better CPR capability to a patient. While at the same time allowing for better protection of Millville's first responders in the current pandemic environment. This requires a two thirds vote. Selectmen three to zero, capital five to zero. Any questions about this article? Nothing, okay. Alex, I'm gonna ask you every time. We only have two left, though. Anything in the chat?
No, nothing in the chat.
Thank you. All right, and then finally, and the lengthiest one is Article twelve, amend Town of Millville bylaws, Chapter twenty personnel. See if the town will vote to rescind in its entirety, Chapter twenty personnel. Of the town bylaws as adopted at the May twenty thirteen annual town meeting and revised by town meeting actions through twenty nineteen and insert the following new bylaw. Provided, however, that the current provisions of Chapter twenty shall remain in effect until a town personnel policy. Has been adopted in accordance with the requirements in the new Chapter twenty. And I'll just read it. Chapter twenty personnel, twenty point one, purpose. The town administrator shall develop and and recommend a town personnel policy to be approved by the Board of Selectmen and administered by the town administrator. Twenty point two personnel policy. The town personnel policy shall encompass modern personnel practices, provide for equitable, sorry, equitable and fair treatment of town employees. Reflect the town's commitment to equal upper equal employment opportunity and affirmative action. And provide for a merit-based performance evaluation system. At a minimum, the policy shall consist of the following components. A applicability to different classes of employees. B recruitment and selection of employees. C rules of conduct and hours worked. D employee benefits. E leaves of absence. F maintenance of personnel records. G classification and compensation plan. Twenty point three, policy adoption and changes. Upon receipt from the town administrator of a proposed personnel policy and subsequent amendments to the policy. The Board of Selectmen will conduct a duly advertised public hearing to provide an opportunity for interested parties to comment on the proposed changes. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Board of Selectmen may accept, reject or amend the proposal of the town administrator. The town administrator shall be responsible for administration and enforcement of the personnel policy. Previous provisions of the Town of Millville Personnel Bylaw shall remain in effect until a town personnel policy has been adopted in accordance with the section. Explanation. This article as drafted by the town's compensation consultant changes the current personnel bylaw. To reflect current municipal best practices related to personnel policies and related compensation structures. No changes to the existing personnel bylaw will be made unless and until the process, as noted in Section twenty point three, policy adoption and changes is followed. The changes will allow for timelier and better oftentimes co- complex budgetary and regulatory decisions needing to be made. Leading up to ATM while also allowing the town to have greater flexibility in responding to changing labor regulations and labor market conditions. As per their recommendation, quote, from an operational perspective, it is recommended the town of Millville significantly modify its personnel bylaw. And adopt a comprehensive personnel policy that includes a classification and compensation plan. This would allow the town's administration the ability to implement essential changes at times consistent with statute. As well as make the necessary adjustments to salary compensation to both retain and attract qualified personnel. It would also ensure all personnel are aware of the administrative provisions governing conditions of employment with the town. Community Paradigm Associates, August twenty twenty one. Selectmen recommended two to one. Does anyone have any questions related to this article? I do. I I'm curious as to why it's urgent to do this at special town meeting and why it couldn't wait to annual town meeting in light of the fact that it's a significant bylaw change.
Yep. So one of the things that does talk about salaries. And we'll be doing budget planning and so to have that. Approved. Basically, we can't consider this when trying to modernize our salary structure at the next town meeting. We have to go by what's. Available now, which is that table which we will need to update. Which has not been updated and I take responsibility for that. So if it's not updated, we'll have to do it for next time. So it's just. It just makes things more modern for our next round of salaries. And Peter, you can let me know if I spoke out of turn there.
No, that's good. It does have a budgetary timeliness to it. I can't say it's urgent, but you know, the the grid does restrict. Any budgetary stresses that we might have. Where people are coming up to the edges of the the grid there in the current structure. So. Getting this underway now would allow for the process, but again, nothing changes as it states here unless. The process is followed, which includes public hearing, board of selectmen approval and so forth. So. You know, we might not get there even if this passes at this town meeting.
So my question is, but the changes. Give the the town administrator the right to make changes to salary and compensation. Who makes those changes now?
So it doesn't necessarily give me the right. I recommend to the Board of Selectmen, but they must approve it. And there's this public hearing as it states. Before the selectmen would approve it. So really, nothing's done. And then lastly, of course, you have the budget process anyway, which. Really determines any appropriation which reflects on any salary amount for any level of staffing.
Yeah. So and Claudia, the thing I would just add is, you know, how does this? How does this function now? So right now, the we have a grid that's in our bylaws. The grid contains certain town positions along with a minimum and maximum salary range or hourly rate range. And so that that grid is modified on a periodic basis. It's supposed to be modified yearly and the townspeople are the ones who are approving or not approving. Those amounts. Those ranges of wage.
Oh, for the tax.
Yes.
To do industry sort of change.
Yes.
This would allow. This would allow. Peter, would this allow you to make those changes and increases?
Really, the Board of Selectmen, it's really the Board of Selectmen's, you know. Vote that Peter is recommending. The Board of Selectmen is confirming. And then the townspeople's role is to still approve a particular budgetary line item. So they still have a role in this. You know, Peter said, like, I recommend paying the librarian five hundred thousand dollars and the Board of Selectmen agree, the town meeting can still say, no, like, that's not gonna be okay.
That's not gonna be okay.
So the way it's written here is it would be okay because the Board of Selectmen approve it.
No, no, that the townspeople still have the right to reject the or accept the total department's budget. So there's still a budget process. An amount goes to town meeting and the townspeople have to say, we approve appropriating this dollar amount to this line item. But as it stands currently, we're like, as it stands currently, those salary ranges restrict us from even being able to. Propose a certain dollar amount that's above the limit to the town to recommend in the first place. You know what I mean? Do you know what I'm saying?
That was confusing, clearly.
I kind of understood this the way that Claudette's understanding it as well. So. The basically, the grid is is kind of what's holding us back right now. We need to update the grid and then be able to process this through town government to the people, approve budgets and so forth. Is that is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Depends on how you foresee, how you perceive holding us back, I guess.
Yeah.
There's two. There's two approaches. One is that that grid is looked at on a regular basis and it and proposes proposed changes are made and the townspeople make those changes. By approving them. The other is this way, which is there is no grid. The grid is Peter's recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen's approval. And the townspeople are responsible for approving a department's budget in total.
And that goes to annual town meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
So their line budget in total. So it doesn't mean they have to. Salary, correct?
Right. That's correct.
As long as they approve the total, it doesn't matter really. They can't change the salary anywhere. I'm just, I I I know. I'm a pain with all these questions, but I want to understand what I'm, you know, what I'm gonna be voting on.
Claudia, you're not being a pain at all. Ask as many questions as you want. Don't think you're being a pain, honestly.
I feel like by changing this, the townspeople don't really have the say.
No, the but the at the the townspeople absolutely would still have a say, because it would still be at the town meeting where they would see the full budget. And so if they saw. A line item like I have a budget open actually. So let me see. Say you look at from. Let me look. All right. So let's take Peter as the sample. So town. Administrator professional salaries, it's discussion line eight. Right now, it's seventy four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. So say at the town meeting in May, you see that line item says one hundred and seventy four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. I we can't pay him that much. Until it's approved. So someone would say, gee, last year that was seventy four thousand. This year it's a hundred and a hundred and seventy four thousand. What happens there? So then there would be discussion. I would say, Peter, how did you slip that by me? And then, you know, I mean, we'd have to have that kind of, it's it's going to be there and in detail and available for all the townspeople to see that. So.
Yeah. So just but typically in the process, they're not seeing that at town meeting. They're seeing the department total.
Yeah, that's the thing that that that's the thing that I think I think Claudia, like. You're not wrong. Like, you're you're not wrong on this. Just to be perfectly clear. The townspeople at town meeting are voting a department total only. So even though you see a salary discussion line item of seventy four thousand dollars, that doesn't necessarily mean that that has to be what is is paid out for that particular line item. Right? It's the department total. So right now, it's truly in the townspeople's control to say what they want to pay their employees from a range perspective, both hourly and salary. To the extent there, you know, it's like non-contracted, or I mean, non-union, non-union employees. So it it is a change from that respect. And the danger from my perspective is. Once you're contracted with somebody. The contract is subject to town meeting approval, but we know that there's a lot that happens at town meeting. Like, there's a lot that happens that you don't, you don't necessarily. It's a different position to be in when you say we've had, we've contracted a new town accountant. They're awesome. They're really working great for the town. But the Board of Selectmen contracted them at double what we're a what we are comfortable paying them. You know, it puts us in a different situation, even though that that is ultimately needs to be recommended by the town because you have a contracted employee that is into the year, like doing their work.
Right. But Aubrey, I guess, so I didn't under like the seventy nine thou- so just keeping with my example with Peter. So his whole town administrative budget is seventy nine thousand seven hundred and four dollars. If you start with one seventy nine, you could hold that line item and say. I noticed that the his salary has an extra hundred grand in it. I'm not comfortable with that. We need to take out that hundred grand. All that discussion could still happen at town meeting.
Yeah, but that's maybe because Peter's department is like one or two line items. For departments that are ten or fifteen, it's not as easily.
But just thinking, Aubrey, if we if we can, about the process of budgeting here in Millville, we're we're gonna have guidance. Letter that you all, that both boards are comfortable with. That goes out to the budget makers with, you know, increases of various recommended increases that. They should factor into whatever they're doing. And in the last couple of rounds, we've, you know, limited the salary increases and we tried to hold them steady. Except for specifically identified exceptions that are justified. We held them at, you know. Level funding for various cost expense items, non-salary cost items. We go through the process. We have the detailed budgets pulled together. Those are compiled. I review them and then I make recommendations of those detailed budgets to the Board of Selectmen. All that's done in, you know, public meetings. And you guys get the same version of the recommended budgets with those details. And you all get to weigh in, you know, talk to the various department heads and 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 drill down into any line item you want. In the process, again, all public and transparent. So there's it's a fairly extensive process. So the likelihood of slipping something through there is not going to happen. Yes, the and that detail is posted on the town website. Prior to the town meeting, so people can see the details of the budgets for which they're only voting on the department totals. So. There's a pretty extensive process of ensuring. Nothing happens. And at the end of the day, everything is subject to voter approval and appropriation. But however you want to do it, it's, you know, fine. And I'm this, this is, you know, as I say. I would read the italicized wording more closely from the compensation folks. Who are actually municipal experts in a variety of municipal topics, so.
I guess my only question, Peter, with that is. Because I'm kind of, I think, getting more confused as we discuss it. Who has the final say on these line items? Is it the voter or is it the Board of Selectmen that does ultimately approving? These monies?
So you your voters approve the department totals, which is your practice. I don't know that that's a. That's not a bylaw policy. In other communities, I see typically. Approve the salary separate from the operating expenses. And you all may decide, you guys made the motion, you you, the finance committee, makes the town meeting motions for the budget. So it's really entirely up to you how you have it go. I've seen other communities where they do approve, have the voters approve the individual line items. It's a tedious town meeting, but that's what they do. You know, you guys make it simpler. Now, it also makes it more challenging if the approvals are by line item. Here, let's say it's a line item and it's. Counts on aging maintenance as an example right now. Right now, they're over that budget line item. But that's okay, because the total department total approved by the voters. They haven't come close to, you know, going above that. So they're they're okay. If the voters approve the line item for council on aging. Repairs and maintenance of automobile, whatever it is. And they go over it, they're gonna have to come to you guys for a reserve fund transfer. Because they can't really go until the end of the year for departmental or transfers among approved accounts, right? Do you think that's a fair description, Aubrey?
Yeah, so yeah, exactly. You're approving the budget total, so you have room to go over on a detail. The detailed descriptions from a budget perspective in our current practice, as Peter mentioned, this doesn't have to be this way. Is we provide the detail to give context to what. The total budget entails. But it's not, it's not the the departments don't need to stay perfectly within those line items. They can go over. As long as they're under on one of their other line items within their department. And that includes this, and that includes salary. So perhaps, like, perhaps a. A recommendation we might have to the extent that this does pass would be to approve salary separately so that the townspeople are really seeing what they're approving for a salary number, not just department total.
That was something I was gonna ask if that could be done at this town meeting, because that I think that makes it. Easier for people to see what's going on. If we if we vote for the. Budget for the senior center or whatever, and it's gonna hold this van. The van comes in, you know, whatever we. Whatever, van or not, I I don't see, I I don't want to see an issue where a salary becomes something that cuts corners elsewhere. And I think that's my concern with it. And therefore, if the salaries were separated, it'd probably be a lot easier to vote on.
And then, again, that's entirely up to the finance committee, right? Your town meeting.
So what?
Motion.
My my question is why the special town meeting and not the annual town meeting?
I think the answer that was given there, Claudia, is so that any adjustments could be. Taken into account for this budget cycle. So, for example, we have some new employees. If this is adopted, then we don't have to stay within the four squares of that grid that's currently in the bylaws for this budget cycle. Yeah. And then they're just the only other thing I would say is. Peter, to your point on the budget cycle and things, to me, the danger of this is is what happens when we lose someone and we're hiring someone new. Because I know that can be an urgent feeling. And we've been there many, many times at this point in the past five years, from accountants to town administrators. And so. Depending on, you know, if you're, if there is no town administrator, then it's the Board of Selectmen. And if the Board of Selectmen are desperate to hire a town administrator because they they need to, then. That that's where I see the danger coming in, coming in in terms of, you know, making like a rash decision. All right. Any other questions on this? We'll obviously deliberate more when we vote. Anything in the chat, Alex?
Aubrey, could I say something as a citizen?
Sure. Yes, definitely.
Hi, Jackie Lima, thirty three Allen Court, citizen, not moderator right now. I wanted to make two comments on this article. So the first is. In things. um, in thinking through if at a town meeting we voted budget separately, salary versus other expenses, just keep in mind, just because you vote a salary amount doesn't mean that a department head couldn't continue to rebudget that. They could have somebody at a higher rate, work less hours. They could eliminate a position and rebudget the dollars for that position to pay the remaining people in the department higher. Um, so, you know, just playing devil's advocate here, I think if you're looking out for a compensation structure that's fair, that's not, you know, playing games, that's keeping people in line, I don't necessarily, it, it might deter people if we vote salaries separate from expenses, but it's not the only way to get around this, would be common one. My second question I think would probably be directed at Jen and Peter if you'll allow it during, I know this is a finance committee um, public hearing, but specifically the first line in, um, this article states that to see if the town will vote to rescind in its entirety, chapter twenty. When I look at chapter twenty in the current bylaws, there are eight sections. You're suggesting that we replace eight current sections of a bylaw with three. And when I do a comparison, I don't believe that all of those eight sections are addressed in the three that you're proposing. So, with all due respect, not in regards to the financial considerations that Aubrey is bringing up as a citizen, I'm also wondering where those other points are going to be, would they be embedded in a personnel policy? Um, have you guys really made sure that you're addressing all eight of the items in current chapter twenty within these three bullets, because I'm not certain that they're all there?
Yep, so that would be addressed in the policy, so that's twenty point two. If you scroll up to this a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
If you don't mind, thank you. Yep, and so the responsibility would be for Peter to create the personnel policy and to present that to us. And to make sure that we're agreeing with it, and the way the eyes are working, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the public hearing would include the personnel policy to say, we agree, like, so we're gonna, the bylaw will change this way, and here's the policy that supports this bylaw. And Peter, you shook your head yes, so that's, I'm glad I understand it correctly, so that would encompass the other aspects.
So, but if there are current policy now, the board is comfortable taking them out of a bylaw and introducing them as a policy?
I am, yes.
And Jen, you are, not just for you, Jennifer Gillis, selectman, but for all future, for the end of time, selectmen. And town administrators, and town administrators, you know, this, this is a change that's for good, unless a bylaw change is back.
Yeah. No, I understand what you're saying, I guess. So, yes, I am, I am comfortable with it. I understand that other people, you know, looking at past behaviors, you know, with other people in other positions, you might not be comfortable, so, but that is something people should consider. But again, because the budget is approved at the town meeting. And so if I'm not on the board of selectmen anymore, and I'm, you know, not on a committee or whatever, you know, the onus is on me to look at the budget and see gee, this went up a lot. And to pay attention to the guidance that's given, and to pay attention to the finance committee meetings that's given, so.
Right, but Jen.
My responsibility to do so.
My question is more than just the budget. It's all of the eight sections that are currently included in the bylaw. You're confident that each of those sections that address personnel, discipline, hiring, um, you know, record keeping, um, fair business practices, not discriminating, all of that is going to be included in what you're proposing here in these three sections, plus an embedded personnel policy? I guess without seeing a draft of a personnel policy, it just makes me a little leery that we're taking such a large bylaw section and consolidating it and saying we'll put it in a policy. Um, whereas a bylaw has, I guess, just different, um, meaning as a resident, as a citizen to me than, than a policy.
Right, well, changing a policy, like, that could happen more frequently than a bylaw change.
Right.
And we do have discipline policies in place that we use right now for, you know, behaviors and things like that. So I think if we're comfortable with one aspect being as an employee policy, then we should, I'm comfortable with more things being part of it.
Thank you.
May I also speak as a citizen?
Sure, can I just ask one question, Jackie, this is two-thirds, is that right, bylaws are two-thirds?
That's correct, yeah.
Go ahead, Chris.
So I think in looking at recent history, the last couple of years, as Jackie alluded to, um, and Jen did as well with some of, um, her explanation, the discipline part comes really kinda just struck a nerve with me as to where is that going to be spelled out, um, in, in consolidating eight to three, um, right now in there, this is kind of vague what I'm looking at as far as that would go, or, um, you know, promotion criteria, things of that nature, um, dismissals and so forth, so. I guess I'm concerned as a citizen as well about that because, um, you know, while it does consolidate and hopefully make things easier, it does have an absence of, of literature that I think is critical to what this policy would do as a whole, or this amendment would do as a whole, whether left alone or whether changed to this.
If, if I could, there, there is separate from the bylaw related to personnel policies existing Millville adopted personnel policies, it's quite extensive. It covers the gamut of all those things in A through, you know, A through, I don't know, not, all but the last one, doesn't have the, it might have classification, but it doesn't have the compensation plan. So G would be the, uh, you know, the grid would be part of the personnel policy and able to be updated without town meeting bylaw vote, or bylaw changes. Uh, but there is an existing personnel policy, it would be, this would be bundled into it, or it would be the basis, forming the basis that would be used for the policy presented to the board of selectmen and the public hearing uh, as following this new chapter twenty. Um, so that would be the plan, and it would be, it needs a little updating in certain areas, but it outlines, you know, the town's policies on discipline, as you said, the town's policies on posting job openings, all those things are in the existing Millville Personnel and Policies Procedure Manual. And it's sixty pages long.
Any other questions or comments on this one for now? Alex, anything on your side?
No, sorry, nothing on my side.
Okay, that's okay, um, so the one and the last thing I wanted to just show here, oops, that is not it, hang on a second. Here it is, okay. Um, so the past several town meetings, the finance committee has distributed, uh, handout that looks identical to this one in terms of format. And what it does is it lays out our various stabilization accounts, our beginning balances, and then each one of the articles to show, like, if all of these articles were to pass, here is what the resulting balances of our stabilization accounts would be. Um, so all, um, I really did here was take each one of the articles that is actually an appropriation of dollars and list based on the motion, the draft motion that Peter provided to me, um, list where they would kinda come from so that we can see, um, you know, really where our, our stabilization accounts are being impacted. So the biggest impact is to our capital stabilization fund, so we're down to forty-six thousand after this, I would expect that with free cash on our annual town meeting, we would be looking to replenish this account, um, you know, quite a bit to bring it back up, I think we at one point wanted to keep around two hundred thousand in there, obviously that's a point for the capital committee to recommend to us. Um, but just wanted to show this to you all and see if anyone has any comments on it, or if everyone's comfortable uh, with this being a handout that's presented on behalf of the finance committee and discussed at town meeting.
I would appreciate this being a handout that is passed out at town meeting. Thank you for preparing it Aubrey, I think it's very helpful for people.
Of course.
I agree, um, Aubrey.
Alright, um, so I would just ask everybody if you could, including Jen and Jackie and Peter, just like cross-check and double-check and just make sure that the, um, I, you know, the balance is tied to what Tara, the town accountant, provided me this morning, so those should be good, but Peter, if you could just double-check my work there and then just make sure that each one of the articles have the correct dollar amount, um, that would be appreciated, because I, I think, pretty confident with it, but just to have another couple set of eyes.
Yeah, it looks great.
Good to me.
Yeah, thank you.
Aubrey, I do have one quick update, I did text Senator Fattman text me during the meeting. And he says it got, it went through the senate budget, he's just waiting to make sure the government signs it into law, so it's like, right there.
Good, that's great news.
Yeah.
Aubrey, can I ask a logistical question on Article Three where it has the two funding sources? Um, Peter, do you know if that thirteen four oh one, is that a two-thirds because it was previously, uh, allocated out of a stabilization?
I don't know whether two-thirds applies to that, it certainly applies to the portion of stabilization, which is the bulk of the Article Three funding. Um, and I have, uh, while we've been in this meeting, I've gotten back comments from council on the motion, so I'll know better once I look at those.
Okay, um, if it has a separate majority um, versus two-thirds, Aubrey, would you want us to motion that separately? Or do you need, I mean, obviously I would think you would need both to pass, so do you wanna bundle it as one motion, or do you prefer two?
Um.
My recommendation would just be one, because you really need the whole thing to pass, but.
Yeah, I think just one.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
With the two, and that'll require a two-thirds.
Two-thirds, yeah.
Stabilization.
Yeah, because thirteen, so, right, if thirteen four oh one passes and a hundred and fourteen thousand, that's not gonna really help us anything, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, one, I think one.
That's right, so you're appropriating the full amount, Aubrey, in the motion, right?
Right, yeah.
And then you're identifying how you're paying, which are the two pieces. So I think the two-thirds, the, the one motion and the two-thirds approach is the the, the most, uh, transparent way to go as well.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay. Um, so Jackie, I'll get this to you, I'm gonna give everyone tonight and tomorrow morning to just look at it one more time and make sure the numbers tie back, and I'll do the same, and then I'll send it to you at some point early tomorrow if that works.
Perfect, thank you, and Peter, you'll send, um, the handout for review as well?
Yeah, so you'll get, uh, we'll update with the finance committee recommendations and a little tweaking of some of the words of the draft that you, that Aubrey showed of the warrant with explanations and recommendations. And then I'll be handing out the motions to folks, uh, once they're finalized. And I'll send them.
Wonderful, thank you.
Alright, so at this point, I would just say, are there any other questions, this is the last opportunity for any public questions or comments that are not from a member of the finance committee, does anyone have anything? And Alex, let me know if you've got anything on your side.
Okay, I don't have any at the moment.
Okay. Okay. Alright, great. Um, so Jen, you asked to leave after Article Three and you stayed till Article Twelve, so you can.
No, I'm committed, now you know, I'm committed. So I am gonna go now.
So no, that sounds good. Um, Chief Coop, thank you so much, you're welcome to join back on the live stream, like, uh, if you, if you, either of you wish to do that, that's totally fine too. But thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I'll go and go to livestream, or do you want me?
Um, whichever you'd rather, Peter, you'll be muted, so you can stay or go, whichever one.
I'll mute and get rid of my face too, but I'm here if you need me.
Okay.
Yes, alright.
Sounds good.
Well, well done otherwise to all, uh, good questions, good effort.
Thank you. Alright, um, thank you guys for sticking with that. So, I guess we'll go kinda starting at the top again, um, and I'll just say the article name, and then see, um, and then we can just, I'll just see if anyone wants to discuss ahead of, ahead of time. Um, and then I'll call for a motion, so we can have discussion, I'll ask for discussion again after a motion is made, but maybe we can just get a sense of how, you know, we're, we're thinking of things before we go into the motion piece of it. Okay. Alright, so we'll start with Article One, monetary increases. Hey, I'm assuming no concerns over this. I'll call, I'll just call, does anyone have a motion to approve or to recommend Article One monetary increases as written?
I'll recommend Article One monetary increases.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Alright, any discussion? Alright, um, aye for me, Claudette?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Okay. Article Two, anything we wanna discuss on this one? Okay, is there a motion to recommend Article Two as written?
We'll make that motion to recommend Article Two as written.
Claudette, is there a second?
No second.
Chris, seconds, any discussion? Okay, we'll vote Claudette. Vote. You're up first.
Oh, I'm sorry, ah. Hi.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye for me? Okay. Article Three. What do you guys think of, um, where we were at last week compared with the information presented tonight and where we're at tonight?
Well, I, I personally think we got some information, so that was good to get.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, personally speaking, um, I started this process being just really feeling like I, I didn't have a full grasp of it, and, and after having several conversations and Jen and I met live this week, um, I kind of explained where we were coming from and the things that we didn't understand, and that, at least for me, that I needed to understand to feel confident presenting something to the town and, um, and, you know, Jen and P, and Peter met, so they worked really hard to get us detail behind it, and, um, you know, this has certainly been an extraordinary year in terms of our, the status of our public safety, so um, I think we can assume that we level set again for the annual town meeting, and we heard that multiple times on the record, so um, I felt really much better about it coming in to tonight's meeting. Anything, anyone wants to say at this point? Alright, is there, okay, and then the school stuff is the school stuff, nothing we can do, so is there a motion to recommend Article Three um, as written, so the total addition to the budget would be a hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars as, um, described in the, the budget breakout that we reviewed this evening? Anyone wanna make the motion? No?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move, so moved, whatever.
So moved, whatever, I'll put that in quotes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, any discussion, any further discussion? Okay, um, Claudette? Your vote?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Same.
Okay, and it's aye for me. So that's a three zero one vote. Yes. Okay, Article Four. Article Four, um, which replenishes our, our, uh, reserve funds with twenty-eight thousand dollars from our public safety stabilization. Anyone wanna discuss that at all? Is there a motion to recommend Article Four as written?
Make that motion to recommend. Make that motion to recommend article four as written.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, call for the vote, Claudette?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye for me. Okay, article five, we're striking, article six, we're striking, article seven, we're striking. So that brings us to article eight, which is the, um, the senior center van, so, let me pull up the actual. Yeah, article eight, the senior center van, um, anything we want to discuss on article eight? No, okay, is there a motion to recommend article eight as written?
Yeah, I'll recommend article eight as written.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Seconds, I'll give it to Chris, I heard him first, let's vote, Claudette?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye for me? Alright, um, the next article is the salt shed, so this is a hundred thousand dollars from our capital stabilization account to fund the salt shed. Um, does anyone want to discuss this at all right now?
This really looks like it's gonna be twenty-five thousand, right?
It has potential to be.
Yeah, right?
So we would be recommending on the article itself, so we'd be recommending on the hundred thousand, but anecdotally, it looks like it, um, could certainly be a lesser amount. And, um, and that, it sounds like, um, capital, and Jen is planning on making that motion on the floor, to the extent that confirmation comes in in time. So is there a motion to recommend article nine as written?
Make said motion.
Okay, Chris, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Claudette, any other, any further discussion? Alright, we'll call for the vote then, Claudette?
Aye.
Gary?
Nay.
Chris?
Aye.
And it's aye for me, so that's a, uh, three, one vote, one, two, three, one, yep, okay. Alright, um, article ten, so this is the niche up inspection, um, anyone want to bring anything forward for this? No? Okay, um, is there a motion to recommend article ten as written?
I will make said motion.
Chris makes that, is there a second?
A second.
Claudette, second, any discussion? Okay, we'll vote, Claudette?
Aye.
Was that an aye?
Yeah.
Okay, Gary?
Nay.
Chris?
Aye.
And it's an aye for me, so two to two. Okay, um, article eleven, so article eleven is going to be the fire department chest compression machine. Um, anyone wanna say anything on this article? Okay, is there a motion to recommend article eleven as written?
I'll motion that.
Claudette, motion's it, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote, Claudette?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye for me, so four zero. Okay. Alright, um, that brings us to article twelve, which is the bylaw, personnel bylaw change, anyone wanna bring anything up here? Um, for me, I will just say, you know, my concerns with this article are several, actually. Um, but the easiest of which is probably the fact that I truly don't believe that we should put forward bylaw changes at special town meetings. I think they really belong at annual town meetings, um, especially one, like, with true financial consequences. So that's kinda my, my first one, which is a procedural one. Um, my second concern is just, you know, we're a very small town, it's hard to get people to volunteer, it's hard to get people to show up. And so I think at a town the size of ours, the more that we can include the, the broader town meeting and votes that impact our finances, the better off we are. Um, so I truly feel like that, that kept us grounded many times over the past five years, when we were looking at new positions and pay ranges. And we did quite a bit of work when it came to bringing in a new town administrator, considering, you know, different, other, other positions. And like, we spent a lot of time thinking of that, and so, um, you know, I, I feel personally that that's pretty important. And, um, I feel kinda pretty strongly about this article. Um, is there a motion to recommend, that said, is there a motion to recommend article twelve as written? Is there a motion to not recommend, I, how is this, I will make a motion to not recommend article twelve at this time, is there a second to that motion?
I second that.
Okay, um. Okay, Claudette, second, sorry, any other, any further discussion? Okay, so we're voting to not recommend it, I'll call for the vote, Claudette?
Aye.
Aye for me, Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alright, so that one's zero to four. Okay, um, thank you guys, does anyone have anything that we need to talk through, or any questions about logistics at town meeting? Or like, you know, anything at all on our role? Um, typically, our role will be, to the extent we make the motion, which, um, looking at the draft, we will be making some of the motions for sure. We have the opportunity to explain the motion itself, so the person who's making the motion, which I think is, for the most part, me on behalf of the finance committee. On our, on ours, I'll have the opportunity to explain. Um, article three, so article three, um, since the finance committee voted in favor of that article. Um, you know, I'm comfortable with the finance committee making the motion, um, itself. The explanation of the motion, I'll probably keep pretty brief, and then to the extent that there are specific questions, I would field those to the board of selectmen or Peter to respond to. Um, but, you know, I'm happy to just, on behalf of the finance committee, since we own the budget's presentation to the town. Um, you know, mo, make the motion, explain that we had an extraordinary year, here's what the, here's what the, um, kind of the high level of the differences are related to public safety. And, and why we're asking for it, and then, um, to the extent that the board of selectmen or Peter have anything to say further, or there are any specific questions, assuming Jackie is fine with it. I would, you know, punt those most likely, but. Does anyone have anything specific to discuss, or questions about logistics? You all gotta show up. Be there, be on time, starts at seven, in person, so, take a shower, do what you gotta do.
I think my only concern is, I believe on article twelve, I voted differently in capital planning than I did tonight.
You shouldn't have voted on article twelve, like, capital planning, cause it's not a capital item.
Oh, that's right, okay, good, um, I just felt like I had more information tonight, so, um, but I don't, I didn't remember if we, uh, voted that night.
Yeah, it's not a capital item, so I don't think you did.
Alright, sorry, I got a one-year-old right next to me, so.
Totally, yeah, trust me. Alright, um, anything else, guys? If not, is there a motion to adjourn this finance committee meeting at eight forty-four PM?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I will make the second, all in favor, aye.
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 Thank you guys, see you Monday, see you Monday, don't forget, bye.
I'm sure you won't let us forget.
I will not forget, bye, Alex, thank you so much for sticking with us.
Alright, guys.
See ya, bye.
Bye, no problem.